And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Allenbos, Ingalls.
Here.
King, Mayor Folkins.
Here.
And at this time, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda this evening.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Allenbos, Ingalls.
Yes.
King, Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask when you come to the podium if you would please state your name and then write your address and keep your comments to three minutes or less. It's greatly appreciated.
Anybody want to start off?
Good evening, council, citizens, and my name's Randy. We'll do this little big gig right here. Have several things tonight. Hope you can all hear me okay. First of all, I'd like to start out to address council, city manager, Public Works. Kudos for job well done for our street department for what they're doing. They're out there plowing day and night now. So, we're in a blizzard. Michigan winter wonderland, how beautiful can it get? And along with that, again, I'd like to address council, city manager, finance director, on keeping our sidewalks open. I know it's going to be a tough year, but citywide, for we can have a walkable community. It really, I mean, we got a foot of snow and I can't even, but I guess we got to go to Florida. That's a trick. Just a couple of things real quick. I want to address the utilities manager. You know, we're in a hot spot in COVID right now, and a lot of citizens are staying home. And we're doing a lot of washing and et cetera, and doing a lot of work from Zoom from home. Just to top off my head, maybe, could we see the water rates drop a little bit? I know that's a tough one, but just an idea, but okay. To whoever, okay, and just a couple of quick things, real quick. Stimson Street by the Shell Station in Mitchell Street, there's a one-hour parking sign that's been there for almost 35 years, never been moved. There is somebody parking there, and it is kind of a hazard because it's close to Mitchell Street, and people are pulling out of the Shell Station. And the other situation I noticed is that Mitchell and Spruce Street, cars are parking right on top of the sidewalk almost to Mitchell Street and right on top of the stop signs in both directions. And if two cars, one turn off Mitchell, the other one trying to come up, it ain't going to happen. Someone's got to give away. So anyways, basically, that's what I want to address city council. And of course, on the marijuana ordinance, we don't need to be tweaking ordinances, and we need to leave them alone because these cause a lot of trouble. When we tweak the ordinances, what happens is a crime happens, and thank goodness for all these gentlemen here and our police, fire, and our other agencies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I will get started. First of all, thank you to Robert Ingalls for the go-blue outfit. I have my little M here as well. Thank you. I wanted to address the marijuana issue and just a couple of words. The very large stacked grower facility and the word unlimited that's in the thing, and it really has bothered me. Now, I personally did not vote for the recreational marijuana bill, though I did realize a severe prison sentencing for many needed to be addressed, and I think that's why it was cleverly included in the bill, and it made over 50%. And I realize over 50% of Cadillac citizens were in favor of the bill. I personally see a very definite role for medical marijuana. I have recommended it when I was doing hospice work for ovarian cancer and other cancers and post-traumatic stress disorder and GI veterans in the war. But I thought the pot lobby would be very happy with the two dispensaries we gave for recreational here, the one Class A, Class B, and Class C growers facilities and the related establishments that they were given to each licensee. I'm not addressing their medical stuff, of course. Now, we realize the Michigan pot lobby is probably the most powerful in the country. They were able to get a exceedingly low tax rate, lowest in the nation, and they charge the same amount, so obviously they have a much higher thing. And of course, the pot lobby is continuing here now to grow this large stacked, have this large stacked facility in our own town where everybody can see it. And it's going to be in the only industrial, but it really opens up a lot of areas here. And currently, I think Everett is the pot center of northern Michigan, and I hope we're not going to end up being the same thing. I don't think that the recreational marijuana has brought utopia to Michigan. It certainly brought a lot more multimillionaires and a little bit of tax money for the cities too. I have two problems with recreational pot. It's very dangerous for teens, where addiction is a definite risk, and if you have a smoke at age 13 or 14, you're 10% chance of becoming addicted, and definitely cognitive problems later in life and psychiatric problems, and I have seen, personally seen these here. And having a large stacked facility right in our town gives the youth the idea that this is a perfectly benign drug for them, even though the THC is massively increased compared to the Woodstock days here. And Colorado has had.
I need to interrupt. Your three minutes is up. There is an opportunity for more public comment during the public hearing.
Oh, okay, so I can finish later then, eh? Okay, thank you. I wasn't certain exactly where to speak to.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Rosansky. Can you hear me okay? I'm an attorney appearing on behalf of W.L. Green Ventures Incorporated, which is a medical marijuana provisioning center permit holder. I'm here to humbly request that the city council give strong consideration to increasing the cap on provisioning center and retail establishment permits to four permits each in order to award medical marijuana provisioning center permit holders with adult-use marijuana retail establishment permits and vice versa. Doing so would not increase the existing number of marijuana retail locations, but would allow for a more competitive market within the city of Cadillac. Benton Harbor and Niles have very similar population sizes as Cadillac, and both allow for four retail establishments within their respective municipalities. The city can take comfort in knowing this about increasing the cap. I ask you to consider the wisdom of allowing all four cannabis retail entities to co-locate with both medical and adult-use permits. Loom and Doongrass currently hold the two permits for retail establishments. Both entities are massive operators with a very successful business model, as evidenced by their many other locations. They will take the position that the cap on retail establishments should remain the same, but I strongly urge you to consider the consequences of not raising the cap. Not only will the medical permit holders be put at a massive disadvantage, but is also likely that they and any future applicants will find this market to not be a viable opportunity. In states that have legalized adult use, the number of medical cardholders substantially declines over time. Because the market for adult use is drastically larger, suppliers, which are growers and processors, increasingly focus on adult-use retailers. As a result, retailers in the medical market can expect a declining medical market as well as fewer products in this market. Retailers who hold only a medical license will quickly fail as it becomes more clear over time. My client in particular has already spent $150,000 on this project in Cadillac as of today. They're planning to invest more than $1 million additionally to complete this project. This figure does not include inventory, which could be hundreds of thousands of dollars of additional investment. My client only has access to the smaller medical market, unfortunately. These numbers are of great concern as a result because of the return of investment that is now far more questionable than it would be if they were allowed to participate in the adult-use market. The other provisioning center permit holder faces a very similar dilemma. If the city council were to adopt my suggestion, the benefits would outweigh any downside. The city would reap the benefits of additional tax revenue from the excise tax allocations, which no longer exist under the medical program. Consumers would also be afforded more competition, which would allow for better market conditions for all involved. Other municipalities have given strong preference to existing provisioning centers when awarding retail establishment permits without running into litigation.
Mr. Rosansky.
Yes.
I have to cut you off there.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Again, there's another opportunity to speak at the public here.
Thank you. I just want to say I'm happy to answer any questions or address any concerns later on as well. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from our regularly scheduled meeting on November 15th.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King, Shippers.
Yes.
Allenbos. Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries. And so that will take us to the public hearings for this evening, and so Marcus, would you like to send us off on those?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. My remarks will be somewhat brief, and they will be relevant to the two public hearings that you have before you this evening regarding our marijuana program. The city council essentially had first reading and set the public hearings at your last meeting with respect to making adjustments or amendments to the marijuana-related ordinances in order to be able to accommodate industrial-type facilities within our industrial zone in the city of Cadillac. The city of Cadillac got into the marijuana business basically a couple of years ago in terms of regulating and zoning for these uses. The city only created one license type for all growing-type licenses, processing-type license, secure transporter, testing facilities. We really weren't thinking much about that license type or those uses, but more so on the retail end when the city council created two license types for both medical and recreational. Those license types, basically those regarding the retail provisioning of marijuana or dispensing of it, are not subject for council's ordinance discussion this evening. That is something that perhaps we can revisit later this winter or this spring, once we get over this current hump in terms of the industrial use, and it is something that we have talked about frankly at your last meeting. I think I mentioned it as well, that it would be something that we would be looking at maybe revisiting later this year or early next year in terms of whether or not to do another revision. But in any event, looking at where we're at today, as your documentation refers to, we're looking at taking the cap off of the license types that are currently prohibiting the ability for there to be industrial marijuana uses within the park. And looking at how other communities have done it, having the restrictions removed and simply renaming it as unlimited is the best approach. There are reasons why, and that frankly is because you might have one facility based upon its scope, might need 20 different licenses, only because of the way that there's statutory restrictions or limitations on the number of plants that each license can get you. So, the changes that are before city council this evening allows for that activity to occur. One change that we picked up just recently that we need to also add into the ordinances to create the unlimited ability of what's called excess marijuana-growing licenses as well. It all correlates to the whole cultivation industrial-type center, and the documents that were left before you this evening, as well as emailed earlier, include that change. So that.
Okay.
Those are my remarks. I'm not sure, Mike, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think you've covered it all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time in the public hearing, we'll go ahead and open the floor for comments as it relates to this public hearing. And to let you know, if you speak during a public hearing, you actually will be allowed six minutes to be able to cover everything that you would like for us to take into consideration this evening.
And there are two.
There are two public hearings, and the first one here is the one to address the.
Recreation.
Recreational establishments.
Okay, well, I just don't personally like the idea of, I mean, we have the beautiful Four Winds and wonderful industries here, and then when we take our tours or our friends, oh, and this is where we grow marijuana. I just didn't think that that's what was originally decided. They can grow it out on some farm or something like that. But the impression to our youth is what I'm concerned about, and in Colorado, where it's been legal for years, the youth, the teens, the young teens, adolescents have 55% higher incidence of marijuana use. So I like to get the idea across that it's a dangerous drug at their age. Now, later on in life, it's not nearly as dangerous, although in the Netherlands, they think 12% THC is equivalent to heroin. They actually officially call that, and so it's, then of course, that's the level it is these days. And secondly, I drive a car, and it's been very well proven that with tests, double-blind, randomized tests of driving a car, if you drive within four hours of taking a joint, smoking a joint, you are definitely impaired. And in anonymous surveys, many people admit to within four hours and some admit to within one hour. And so again, I just don't think we need to, it's just going to be snowballing, especially that word which I do not like at all called unlimited, because you take, give them an inch and they'll want a mile, so. There's a wonderful book by Ben Court called Weed Incorporated. You can watch a 14-minute YouTube of the whole book, but it talks about all the dangerous things that can happen when it's just, especially when kids start early, and he himself started at age 13 and wanted harder and harder and harder drugs and was severely addicted, and then got off of it, and now he goes around the country mourning about that. And we're just, we've given, I thought we've done very well in following this proposal to give two recreational, two medical, and I just hate to see it happening. And just to let you know how, one last example, and I'll sit down, and how in Colorado, for instance, in Pueblo, they analyzed in a hospital newborns for one month, and 45% of those babies had marijuana in their umbilical cord. And just the idea that this is a totally innocent drug, that's, I don't want to just open the floodgates, which I think that word unlimited spells out. Thank you. By the way, marijuana in pregnancy increases, you get twice as many autistic kids, and these kids are going to be cognitively impaired without a doubt.
Randy. Hey, first of all, I'd just like to say thank you to the police and all the firemen we have here tonight. I apologize that you guys got to wait for your recognition and what you do for our community. So now, again, I'm going to come back and say no to this ordinance. We cannot keep tweaking ordinances to benefit businesses. I would like to have, I'd like to have a tax break, like we're going to be doing here shortly. I know I'm going off subject, but I like down at Speeds, I own a couple of rental houses and my own, and hey, I'd like a nice tax break.
Mr. Rose.
Okay, but anyways, getting back to marijuana, we should not, we need to resist the changing and the opening of more marijuana establishments in the city of Cadillac and even at retail. Yeah, maybe it will reduce the prices and they'll make more profit, but this does trickle down. I remember when I was 18, 19 years old, and I'm sitting out at 7-Eleven asking, hey buddy, buy me a six-pack. Our children in the community are going to get it. And the worst thing again, and I've repeated it on and on, is that our officers and the fire and the first responders have to go out to where all these meth addicts are, and they have to fix these guys up, they got to dress them, and this is what produces, and these actions happen. And then these good gentlemen that are here to enforce our laws, they got to go back to a normal life, and is that fair to them? What do they have to go through the rest of the night? They just saved a human life. Thank you, guys.
Okay, not seeing anyone else, we'll close the public hearing, or excuse me, the public comment portion of the hearing, and then go to any discussion amongst the council, or if you have any questions for Marcus or Mike.
I thought I would add, if you wouldn't mind, my members of the council, that the city does frequently work with a private nonprofit group that's been in town since the, I want to say the 1950s or 60s, called the Cadillac Industrial Fund, and as a part of our collaborations, they are well aware of the changes coming forward under consideration for tonight, and we're supportive of doing that and looking at trying to further encourage economic development and industrial development within our community. And so area industry is well aware of what city council is looking at.
And we got to tour the facility, the Loom facility in Everett, where they grow, how many growers' licenses do they have, do you remember?
I think they have somewhere between 20 and 25 licenses, including a processing license.
Yeah, it was a very nondescript building.
Hard to find.
Yeah, it looked like a nice place to work, looked like any other factory or industrial building that you would see, or warehouse, so. I think that was definitely a good tour to take, and you know, I think this would be a good industry to have, you know, in Cadillac, so. They seemed like good jobs, the workers seemed happy, and it didn't seem to be a nuisance of any kind, so.
A facility of that scope could bring a couple of hundred well-paying jobs to the community across a spectrum of both white-collar and blue-collar type positions, so.
And it's not, I mean, if you're driving around, it's not like it's going to be obviously what it is, and if you're taking tours even in the industrial, through the industrial park, I don't think it's going to stand out in any way. It also will not, a growing facility is not on the main street, it's not promoting the product among the citizens or even, you know, visitors or whatever. It is a way to manufacture this product, and this is a growing industry, and it's highly, highly regulated by the state, and I think that it's something that we should do here.
There are also, to my knowledge, no other industries in the city in which the city itself first has a sort of determining hearing, like what you're having this evening, to determine whether or not to allow this type or that type of an industrial use based upon its use. And so the reason, of course, why you're having that conversation is because of the way that the state of Michigan, and because it's marijuana, established under state statute, the fact that you have to specially approve licenses for this type of use. But as, we're very fortunate to have a very vibrant industrial park within the city's limits, they make a whole host of different types of products that go to market. Everything from defense contractors to, you know, boats, to, you know, wood burning, you know, facilities that make power for the electric grid, to everything rubber that you could find on a car. There's a whole variety of different things that are manufactured in the community, some that some people might find offensive, some that some people may not, but yet, you know, this is the only time that you're in a position that you're in where you're making, having to make that determination about the use, so.
And these facilities, not a manufacturer, a growing facility, really would not be able to function without being able to have multiple licenses.
Correct.
Otherwise, you'd have a bunch of little fly-by-night things, you know? We don't want that. We would like something that is well-managed, well-regulated, and.
And that's the justification for making the, or removing the limitations of having a capacity restriction is because, not that you're going to see dozens and dozens of growing operations opening in the city, you might have a few, and then each one might have several dozen licenses. We just don't know, and so as other communities have done so before us, you have to remove those capacities in order to facilitate the ability for this type of industry to come to your community, so.
Well, anything else? I will make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to amend Section 10-2 of the Cadillac City Code relating to recreational marijuana establishments as amended.
Support.
Councilmember King, Shippers.
Yes.
Allenbos. Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Folkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I do not have a separate briefing for the second public hearing. The second public hearing is in regard to the medical marijuana-related ordinance as well.
Okay.
Do we have a separate hearing on that one?
Yes, yeah, it's a separate public hearing, but there isn't a separate presentation.
So again, we'll open the public comment as it relates to this public hearing, which is the medical marijuana facilities.
Yep, it's me again. What I'd like to see tonight, we're missing council members. We should table both resolutions until we have a full council, because we don't know what Mr. King or Mr. Allenbos's opinions are, so we should table these until we have a full council, which would be more appropriate. And again, we're tweaking ordinances. How wonderful it is to be growing all that marijuana and putting all these employees, hundreds of employees, to work. What a beautiful thing. If that's all we can consider, there's got to be an underlying problem or some matter underneath to have a facility that big in the city of Cadillac. We got them in Evert, Everett, Travers, Big Rapids, et cetera. Do we really need them in Cadillac? No, we don't. I would say we should table all these resolutions and new ordinance adoptions till we have a full council. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move forward with any other discussion the council would like to have or if someone would like to entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to amend section 10-3 of the Cadillac City Code relating to medical marijuana facilities.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Allenboss, Ingles.
Yes.
King. Mayor Fulkens.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, and that takes us to some appointments this evening.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Mark Snyder to the Cadillac Historic District Commission for a three-year term to expire on December 31st, 2024.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the reappointment of Mark Snyder to the Cadillac Historic District Commission for a three-year term to expire on December 31st, 2024.
I will support that and also note that he has served on that commission since 2005.
Councilmember Allenboss, Ingles.
Yes.
King, Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens.
Yes, motion carries.
It's also being recommended to approve the reappointment of Gwen Dubrovic to the Cadillac Historic District Commission for a three-year term to expire on December 31st, 2024.
I will make a motion to approve the reappointment of Gwen Dubrovic to the Cadillac Historic District Commission for a three-year term to expire on December 31st, 2024.
I will support that and she served almost 10 years, so.
Councilmember Ingles.
Yes.
King, Shippers.
Yes.
Allenboss, Mayor Fulkens.
Yes, motion carries. That takes us to the city managers' report this evening.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The first request under the city managers' report this evening is a request for the resident, residents at 1401 Walnut Street, the Fiorvento family to house ducks. The city council several years ago put an ordinance in place that allows for the administrative approval for up to six chickens or hens, no roosters, as well as for six rabbits. But the ordinance stopped there, did not get into any other livestock. A request came in from the family to be able to house up to six egg-laying ducks within their rear yard. Our recommendation this evening is to follow the ordinance that we have, which then requires city council to consider that request. Our recommendation would be to approve it, given that we have a past track record of approving requests for the six egg-laying hens as well as six rabbits. We did receive correspondence from a neighbor across the street concerned that there might be upwards of a dozen or so ducks currently at the residence. I'm, I am not factually certain if that is true or not, however, certainly following city council's determination this evening, assuming that city council does approve up to six, we will verify and then require that if there are any more than six, that the homeowner remedy that situation to make sure that there is only six.
Sophie's Choice for ducks.
Yes.
Are the neighbors here that wrote to us? The weather's out pretty bad. Well, given the fact that when we've approved these things in the past, that I believe Mike Coy goes out and checks on things and he is a worthy checker of things, I would, I would make the motion to approve the request from the Fior, Fiorvento family, Fiorvento?
I believe so.
I'm sure I'm, I'm sure I'm butchering that. Fiorvento family, forgive me if I said it wrong, I have a similar name, to keep up to six egg-laying ducks within the rear yard of their residence at 1401 Walnut Street and at night or during inclement weather like we have right now, within a stall built in their shed.
I'll support that as well.
Councilmember King, Shippers.
Yes.
Allenboss, Ingles.
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens.
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Since 2010, this is the next item regarding the Prosecution Services Contract. Since 2010, the city and Wexford County have been in a, in a governmental agreement or relationship where we've had collaboration within those services. It's time again for that agreement to be renewed. There are no changes to the agreement. The current extension and fee structure for the contract does expire at the end of this calendar year and the recommendation would be to not make any changes in rates or services and to continue it for another four-year extension.
What did we do before 2010?
Before 2010, we used the prior law firm and paid whatever the current rates were at that point.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the extension of the contract with the Wexford County Prosecuting Attorney through December 31st, 2025.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers.
Why, yes.
Allenboss, Ingles.
Yes.
King, Mayor Fulkens.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. At this point in time, we're going to have a special presentation this evening from our Public Safety Director, Adam O'Chapka. We're going to take a few minutes, and this is something that, you know, I, I wish we, we had the opportunity to put it on our agenda more, more frequently, and it's to recognize, nice glasses, by the way, it's to recognize our police and fire officers accordingly. When you are ready, sir.
Mayor, council members, thank you very much. I'm honored and it's a privilege for me to be up here before you to recognize some of our police officers and firefighters, give some introductions. COVID has really put a hamper on communications with council and being out in public, so it's, it's actually kind, kind of refreshing to be able to do that. Officer Dahl? I'm going to introduce our newest officer, Officer Nick Dahl. He was born and raised in Chelsea, Michigan. He grew up working on the family farm with his dad, graduated from Chelsea High School in 2008 and attended Washtenaw Community College in Ann Arbor. He then transferred to Siena Heights University in Adrian, Michigan and graduated in 14 with a BA in criminal justice. Also a member of Siena Heights lacrosse team. He completed EMT training in 2010 and paramedic training in 2014. Graduated Lansing Community College Fire Academy in 2015 and from Mid-Michigan Police Academy in 2016. He worked as an EMT paramedic for Jackson, Michigan, community ambulance from 2010 to 2017. He's worked as a firefighter/paramedic for Leroy Township, Michigan from 2016 to 17. He's also previously worked at Jackson, Michigan Police Department from 2017 through 2020 before joining the Cadillac Police Department in November of 20. He moved to Cadillac with his wife Devon because it's his favorite vacation spot. Currently, he's volunteer coaching with the Cadillac Lacrosse Club. Officer Dahl, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next introduction I have is... Diana Morris. One of the hardest things that we do as police or firefighters is, is be able to talk ourselves up. It's very difficult for all of us. So Diana Morris, she began her career at the Pinellas County? Pinellas County Sheriff's Office in Florida in March of 2016. In August of 19, she moved back to Michigan with her boyfriend, who is now her husband, because he wanted to move back to his hometown. After moving to Michigan, she discovered that she missed law enforcement, went through the M. Cole's Recognition of Prior Training Program and became a certified Michigan police officer. She was hired by Cadillac Police Department in March of 2020. Diana, thank you for your service. Now, I'm going to combine these. It was kind of difficult to figure out how we were going to put these together. But firefighter Dale Hall, firefighter Wesley Owens. Dale is an introduction. Wes has been with us for quite some time. Dale started the fire service back in '09 as a volunteer in Leroy. He is a third-generation volunteer firefighter and worked alongside his dad with the Leroy Rose Lake Fire Department until coming here to the city fire department in '19. He also worked at the Peninsula Fire Department for several years. Since becoming a firefighter, Dale has also received his EMT license, fire instructor certificate, and is currently taking college classes, working towards a bachelor's degree. He's also a member of the Michigan Fire Service Instructors Association and has worked with the State Fire Marshal's Public Outreach Program. Dale worked at the Career Tech Center before coming here, where he helped teach public safety classes. There, he helped incorporate fire training into the class and helped plan several large training exercises where the high school students got to work alongside first responders. Since he started working here, Dale has had to learn how to cook. And he's also become a pretty good baker. When he's not, did someone write this for you? When, when he's not at work, Dale enjoys spending time on Rose Lake during the summer in Plains to be doing a lot of snowboarding this winter. I'm going to go over a quick, a quick intro of firefighter Owens. Wes entered the fire service after high school in 2010, obtaining his fire certifications, EMT license, fire officer certifications, and an associate degree. He worked part-time in Grand Travers County as a firefighter/EMT. While living in Manistee, he served as a member of two volunteer departments in Manistee County with Manistee Township and Philer Township Fire Departments, along with coaching swimming with the Manistee Swim Team and high school teams. Wes was a lieutenant and training officer for the Manistee Township Fire Department, where he, among others, impacted new training standards and practices to improve department professionalism and safety. In 14, he was awarded Outstanding Young Public Service Provider by the Manistee J.C.'s. He was then hired with the city of Cadillac in 2017, where he serves as a full-time fireman. During his time with the city, he has assisted with im, implement, implementing a water rescue program and policy and has recently been nominated at Union President for the Cadillac Firefighters Local 704. He currently lives in the city of Cadillac with his girlfriend and three dogs. He greatly enjoys working for the fire department and spending time out of work with friends and family, which brings us to the first awards. The morning of September 29th, 2020, at approximately 9:25 in the morning, the Cadillac Fire Department was dispatched to report of a structure fire at 1224 Dandy Street in the city of Cadillac. Upon arrival, firefighters noticed a large amount of smoke billowing from the single-story residential structure. A neighbor reported to firefighters that there was an elderly gentleman still inside the residence. Outfitted in their turnout gear and SCBA, firefighters Wesley Owens and firefighter Dale Hall immediately entered and began the search of the residence. As their search progressed, firefighter Owens and firefighter Hall entered a bedroom where the victim was laying on the floor next to his bed. Firefighter Owens and firefighter Hall were able to remove the victim. Now, I'm reading off a piece of paper, but I'll tell you, the kitchen was fully involved and the bedroom was off the kitchen. They went through the fully-involved flames to get to the bedroom where they pulled, they pulled the elderly gentleman out of the burning structure. The victim was brought out to safety where he was treated and transported by EMS and later released from the hospital. The quick actions of firefighter Owens and firefighter Hall, along with their performance above and beyond the call of duty at extreme personal risk, were instrumental in the rescuing and saving of another person's life. For this, the Cadillac Fire Department and the city of Cadillac are awarding the most sacred of all medals, the Life Saving Awards. Firefighter Dale, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next, Sergeant Bertram. Sergeant Bertram is a husband of 17 years to his wife Lindsay Bertram, and they have two teenage children. They live in Cadillac area since he was hired by the Cadillac Police Department in 2007. Nick was a police officer for two years in the Upper Peninsula prior to his service with the city. He has served in multiple disciplines within the police department, including the Emergency Response Team, firearms instructor, evidence technician, and drug recognition expert. He was promoted to the rank of sergeant in 2017. And his time off, Sergeant Bertram enjoys spending time with his family and participating in various sporting events. On April 4th, 2021, Cadillac Police Department was advised of a homicide suspect near the Cadillac area. Sergeant Bertr, Bertram located the suspect vehicle, activated his emergency lights and sirens in an attempt to stop the suspect. The homicide suspect led Sergeant Bertram on a high-speed pursuit. During this time, the suspect had fired multiple rounds at Sergeant Bertram through the suspect's rear window. Without regards for his own safety, Sergeant Bertram continued the pursuit. The suspect ditched his vehicle in a dealership and fled on foot into a nearby golf course. Sergeant Bertram directed incoming patrols and secured a perimeter around the scene. The suspect was later found deceased from a self-inflicted gunshot wound. Sergeant Bertram's courage under fire and his ability to maintain a commanding presence is no less than exemplary. For these acts, we are hereby awarding Sergeant Bertram with a Medal of Bravery. Sergeant Bertram. Deputy Chief. Last but not least, very much not least. This is Eric Eller's biography. He was born and raised in the Alpena area. He graduated from Alpena High School in 1990. He graduated from Lake Superior State University in '94 with a bachelor's, a science degree in law enforcement. In August of '94, he was hired part-time with the Alpena County Sheriff's Department. In March of '95, he started full-time with Eastern Michigan University Police Department. And in July of '95, he accepted a position with the Cadillac Police Department. He's been an evidence tech, a member of the Emergency Response Team, accident reconstructionist, school liaison officer, property room manager, and FTO, Field Training Officer. In February of '07, he was promoted to sergeant, and in '16, he was promoted to captain. He is on the CTC Public Safety Advisory Board and serves on the Board of Directors for Oasis. He's a graduate of the Law Enforcement Executive Leader Institute. By the way, he graduated top of his class, but he won't say that. McAuliffe Basic and Advanced Supervision School, Michigan Chiefs of Police Executives and New Chief School, and the National Command and Staff College Command and Staff Leadership Program. He has currently served the city of Cadillac and the citizens for the last 26 years and five months. Eric Eller has served the citizens of Cadillac for 27 years, holding nearly every position in the department to include interim chief of police. Eric has a record of outstanding services to the citizens of Cadillac. In September of 2020, Captain Eller was promoted to deputy chief of police. He currently advises me in operational activities, policy administration, and personnel matters. DC Eller has more than earned his promotion and I'm glad to be a part of recognizing his accomplishments. Deputy Chief Eller, congratulations and thank you for your service to the city of Cadillac. And that's all I have for you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Again, really appreciate everyone's time in regard to acknowledging some of the very special activities of our police and fire departments and, of course, the special recognition for some of the things that they've accomplished in terms of life-saving and bravery, as we learned this, this evening. This next item is another special recognition item, and this is in regard to the Government Finance Officers Association of America Distinguished Budget Presentation Awards Program. And I have a few remarks that I prepared before I kick this over to Owen that I'd like to just kind of run through. The city of Cadillac, for the last 38 consecutive years, and I'll repeat that, for the last 38 consecutive years, has received the Annual Government Finance Officers Association of America, or GFOA, Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. And for the last 38... of America, or GFOA, Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, and for the last 36 consecutive years, received the equivalent award for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. These awards are determined based on an examination of our documents by a panel of independent reviewers. They are the highest awards achievable, the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting nationally, and according to the GFOA, represent a significant achievement by our organization. Additionally, for the first time ever, our city received, and again, for the first time ever, our city receives special recognition for our annual budget, specifically under the section regarding performance measures. As members of council know, our process begins with and ends with you. You know, city council's engagement with our professional staff is a part of our annual budgeting process, is invaluable. It enables our organization to utilize the tools that we have to create the financial documents, you know, that are ultimately used by every department of the city, and of course, are available to the public, too. These documents are very easily accessible just by going to our website, or if you don't have internet access, you can come in, and we're happy to share with you whatever it is you might be looking for. So as I thank everyone on council, you know, for council's continued, you know, support, I really need to especially thank our finance director, Owen Roberts, and our accounting manager, Carol Pacella, for their tireless efforts every year in creating the final products that then have become, you know, basically treasures nationally for people to model their documents after. And so with those remarks, I'm now going to turn it over to our finance director, to Owen.
Okay, did you want to see the video first?
Yeah, sure.
Yep, okay. So this year is part of that, you know, by the way, thank you, and I just have a few comments to make on that, but wanted to show you this video. I was hoping this would be a little bit more personalized for us, but this came from the GFOA, and really, it mentions Cadillac in the ribbon, and it's kind of pre-recorded, but it just kind of highlights from the national director of the GFOA what it really means to do this.
Greetings from the Government Finance Officers Association. I'm Chris Morley, GFOA's executive director. It is my honor to recognize you for receiving the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. The purpose of this award program is to encourage and assist governments to repair comprehensive and understandable budget documents that we believe will both improve transparency and trust in government. To earn the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, you met demanding program criteria. Such a record reflects the professionalism, commitment, and dedication of your organization's leaders and finance team. We hope that this award will serve as an example and encourage others to strive for the same high standards in their own budget documents. Therefore, it is my privilege, on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association, to present to you this Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Congratulations. Greetings from the government...
Once is enough, I'm sure. So first, I want to start off by saying, you know, this started 38 years ago, and I was a happy-go-lucky sixth grader at 12-years-old at the time. So, you know, I had no part in starting the excellence of what represents this award for the City of Cadillac. So my predecessor, Dale Walker, just want to give him just a special recognition as well for taking the initiative, really, to begin that for the first time, both on the budget and the audit report. In the video, he mentioned the two words, "trust" and "transparency," and that this really should be an assurance of that, I think, to our community. And I think when you look at some of the things that we hear negatively, what you hear is the opposite of those words, kind of untrustworthy and not transparent. And I think what we do with these documents and the easy access that we try to give to them makes it something where it really represents, I think, the, really, the prime example of what trustworthy and transparency really looks like. So that really is the impetus behind continuing to undergo these processes. It adds dozens, if not, you know, 100 or more pages to our documents, and they can be a little bit intimidating at times, where, you know, we're always happy to help walk people through that information, but really, it represents something where if you want to know it about the finances of the city, you really can find it in what we publish and make publicly available and have multiple, multiple public meetings and discussions about. So it's also not a one department or a one-person effort. Carol really is somebody that I just rely on time and time and time again. Quality control, putting together numbers, just helping fix my mistakes and, you know, just provide quality information and communication of that as well. And so I just really appreciate that from her perspective. Couldn't do that without having her kind of holding up the arms a little bit. And then the whole team as well. Marcus said it starts and ends with council, and that really is true. I think we talk about these awards every year. I wanted, you know, as Marcus and I talked about it, we really want to do this just for the public's benefit. You know, we put the plaques on the wall every year and add the years to the plaques, and I think it can kind of become just routine to say, "Ah, we get the award, and we get that every year." There are 1,700 units of government, including counties, schools, cities, townships, in the country that get this award. There are 38 of those in the state of Michigan, out of about almost 1,300 cities, villages, townships. And so I think it really is something that's noteworthy, not to me as a person, not to our department individually, but for our city as a whole. And so I think it's just a really good news for the right reason kind of thing, that we really are committed to being open, honest, transparent with the numbers that come through here, and we really want people to know that, and we're always happy to talk about these things with members of the public. So thank you for allowing us this time and this kind of special recognition.
Well, I think that there should be another round of applause for that.
Okay.
Give them a raise.
Oh, we're gonna... Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The next item on the agenda is a recommendation regarding a premium payment for all full-time employees. As the city council packet includes a council communication, starts talking about how, over the last couple of years, the city, and not just the city, but the world, has been embroiled in the global COVID-19 pandemic, which has obviously impacted hundreds of millions of people worldwide. What I know that council has been briefed on in the past, at least through COVID-related updates that we used to do when they were on our agenda, nearly all of our employees were classified as essential workers during the lockdowns and the partial lockdowns that went through our state. If we can all recall back to not that long ago, there were a host of different levels and layers of lockdown. And as such, worked many hours throughout that time of the pandemic thus far, and certainly we continue to work through it as well. The city during that time also chose not to take any action with regard to additional compensation to those employees. And so in other municipalities throughout the state of Michigan, and certainly throughout the country, there were different options available. One option would be to essentially adjust an employee's compensation so that they could then be eligible for unemployment, to then make up for that difference in adjustment, but also at the same time, become eligible for what was quite an enhancement to the unemployment program. I don't have that number in front of me at this moment, but I believe it may have been over $600 difference each time an unemployment compensation check was sent out. And again, none of our employees within Cadillac were put on that program, even though there were other municipalities that were able to take advantage of that. Additionally, in looking at our current state of finances, the city at this point is nearly $1 million in the black, and that doesn't even take into consideration the additional $1 million that is coming our way through the Federal America Recovery Program Act, or ARPA, that you might be more familiar with. Also, in looking at what the other largest local unit of government, which is, I should say, the other largest unit of government in our area, which is, Wexford County has done, they have looked and have implemented putting in a $7,500 premium pay adjustment for all of their employees over a three-year period, and have just basically reduced that to $2,500 a year, every year for the next three years. Obviously, as we have talked about in the past, we're certainly concerned about retention, recruitment. Not that this is necessarily a recruitment tool per se, because this is a one-time-only recommendation based upon one-time-only dollars that we have available, but we are looking at the recommendation this evening of a $1,500 premium pay adjustment for all city employees and to authorize the mayor to execute any employment agreement documentation required to facilitate those payments.
Excuse me, I would just like to thank the staff and all the employees at the city for such an amazing job these past couple of years, when things got really tough, and as Marcus said, others were able to take partial furloughs and get extra payment for that, and you folks just were able to go with the flow and make sure that what needed to happen, happens. And I just really appreciate that, and speaking for my neighbors and my family, we really appreciate that we could count on the fact that you all were here throughout all of that. I think this is the least we could do.
Yeah, I agree.
I think it's a very reasonable ask, and it's not unique. It might sound unique to some people, but it is not unique. As we've come through this last almost two years of COVID, there's many organizations doing the same thing for their employees, and so I would echo what council membershipers has said about being grateful, knowing that our police and our fire and our city staff were there for the community throughout the pandemic, and that you'll continue to be. So thank you.
It ain't over yet. Please. I would like to make a motion to approve a premium payment of $1,500 per employee and authorize the mayor to execute any employment agreement documentation required to facilitate those payments.
Support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass, Ingles.
Yes.
King, Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcon.
Yes, motion carries.
Can we...when will they be getting their payments, or these payments?
Before the end of the calendar year, possibly by the end of this week.
Oh, that would be lovely. Before Christmas would be great.
Be the 17th.
Great.
17th?
Good dear.
Yeah, 17th.
That's great. Good job, everybody. Thank you. Since we're clapping a lot tonight.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of the city council. Certainly very much appreciated, all of your continued support, and I know, speaking on behalf of the staff, we're all very gracious for that. The next three items I'm going to cover all in one. They are related to a redevelopment of 423 North Mitchell Street, more commonly known as where the former Speeds Automotive Facility is. If you were to look at the council communication under the recommended action, it actually summarizes what these documents are. And so the resolutions before you this evening, first of all, are just simply to set the public hearings. And so we're looking at setting the public hearings for all of these on December 20th. The first one is with respect to the Brownfield Plan, and by the way, our Brownfield consultant will be here on the 20th, barring COVID or other related issues, if not in person, certainly remotely, to provide a little bit of a more in-depth presentation. But the first item is regarding the Brownfield Plan that would allow for eligible activities to be reimbursed to the developer and/or the city. The second one is regarding the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act District and establishing a district so that then an exemption application can also be considered. And so similar to what the city did with respect to the Cadillac lofts, for the commercial redevelopment district that we created, as well as the application that we considered, all at the same time, we're doing the same thing here, where we need to create a district as well as entertain or consider an application that has been filed with us for an eligible property within that district to receive the incentive. The third item is then that application itself. And so the reason why we're doing this at the same time is because of the statutory requirements within this particular program that would restrict the ability for the developer to actually move forward with development. And I probably should have started with this. The development itself, just in summary, is taking what would be defined as a functionally obsolete property, essentially, or an obsolete property, a blighted obsolete property, turning it into a new mixed-use development, which will be the home for, I believe, 14 residential rental lofts, as well as a restaurant and other restaurant-type commercial uses. The other part of the project as well includes additional on-street parking, excuse me, additional off-street parking to accommodate people that wish to patronize the new establishment. So it's going to truly transform that northern, you know, area of our downtown corridor off of Bremer and Mitchell Streets, and would not be possible if not for these types of incentives. Developments of this nature cannot happen unless they receive these types of programs that enable to make all of the budgets work and the numbers work. The cost of property coupled with the cost of materials, coupled with what market rents are, don't add up to a viable project unless there is the ability for abatements and incentives to be put in place. Additionally, it's important to understand as well that in order for the developer to even be eligible to receive any form of assistance through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the City of Cadillac has to be engaged and essentially have the desire to see this type of project move forward. And the way that the state, you know, wants to see that happen is through the local-level approvals of these types of programs. And so this requires the Cadillac Brownfield Authority to be wanting to see this type of project move forward. It requires the Downtown Development Authority as well, one, because the project's located within that area, and two, because the Downtown Development Authority needs to essentially take a waiver on their proceeds that they otherwise would have been receiving over the duration that the Brownfield is in place. And then, of course, it involves city council. City council has to then overall approve the abatements that you're going to have before you, that we're going to have the public hearing on presumably in a couple of weeks. So again, it's one set of comments that covers all three. You do need to take the items individually when you're considering the setting of the public hearings.
Okay. I've heard more than once from plant managers or manufacturers housing...
I hear, I've heard more than once from plant managers or manufacturers, housing. Housing, and to have more units available would be great. I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution regarding Brownfield Plan for the 423 North Mitchell redevelopment and set a public hearing for December 20th, 2021.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles.
Yes.
King, Shippers.
Yes.
Alambas, Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
And I would make a motion to adopt the resolution regarding obsolete property rehabilitation district establishment for the 423 North Mitchell redevelopment and set a public hearing for December 20th, 2021.
Support.
Councilmember King, Shippers.
Yes.
Alambas, Ingles.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
And I would make a motion to adopt the resolution regarding obsolete property rehabilitation act application for the 423 North Mitchell redevelopment and set a public hearing for December 20th, 2021.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Alambas, Ingles.
Yes.
King, Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're almost through.
Okay.
How you doing, Mike?
Mike, you're still there, right?
Yeah.
His phone is muted.
Yeah, sorry, he was on mute.
We were just checking in on you.
Oh, I'm still here.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. And following somewhat of a familiar theme, and this will likely be somewhat similar at your next meeting as well as we go and actually have the public hearings, I have one set of comments that relate to both of the items. And so as we talked earlier this evening regarding the regulatory-related amendments that City Council considered, and then post the public hearings approved, at the same time and along a parallel track, there are the necessary zoning-related items that need to be also considered and eventually approved in order for everything to sort of come together and work in tandem with one another. To that end, at the Planning Commission's last meeting, they considered the zoning-related items, and they are colocation, stacked growers licensing, and minimum distance requirements. And again, this is related to both the adult use of recreational and medical marijuana ordinances or program that we have. The Planning Commission unanimously approved the recommendations that were set forth. And the recommendations set forth, again, that are very clearly outlined in the public packet, allow for the colocation so you can have both adult use and a medical license at one site. You can stack licenses, something that before, which was prohibited, would not allow for you to have, as a, for instance, a large cultivation facility with dozens of licenses under one roof. You could also have, as a, for instance, a processing license in that cultivation facility that something before wouldn't be allowed. And as we have learned in just our sort of informal research, most cultivation facilities do have a processing facility in accordance with state law, within a separate part of the building. And that's something that we've heard would be of interest if we are to have a cultivation facility here. Minimum distance requirements as well. After much thought and looking at, again, how some other municipalities have done it, having an arbitrary distance between this type of use and any other use within the city, we thought was not appropriate, given that there is no use, or, excuse me, no spatial separation at all between any other use within our industrial park and any other part of the city. That being said, after careful consideration and diligent discussion with the Planning Commission, they did amend that component as a part of their recommendation to require that the marijuana use within the industrial park not be immediately adjacent to any type of public or private educational institution, you know, school. And so that is part of what is before you this evening. And the recommendation would be to set the public hearings tonight for those two zoning-related ordinances for your December 20th meeting. And we can certainly do a retread of that, of course, on the 20th as a part of the staff presentation, but.
December 20th, it's going to be a big meeting.
Yeah, a big meeting. Well, they're all big, you know, but yeah.
I thought the Planning Commission did a good job hashing this out and keeping the minimum distancing regulations, so.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to amend Section 46-752 of the Cadillac City Code relating to recreational marijuana establishments and set a public hearing for December 20th, 2021.
Support.
Councilmember Alambas, Ingles.
Yes.
King, Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
And I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to amend Section 46-753 of the Cadillac City Code relating to medical marijuana facilities and to set a public hearing for December 20th, 2021.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles.
Yes.
King, Shippers.
Yes.
Alambas, Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
You know, when we first passed these ordinances, I distinctly remember us saying that, you know, we were on the front end of doing this. And we said that as we learn, as we get new information, we can always adjust and tweak as necessary. And I'm glad to see this coming forward, that new information brings new policy, which is as it should be.
I appreciate that Councilmember Shippers and Mayor and Councilmember Ingles. And as I mentioned earlier this evening, you know, we're not prepared this evening to present any new recommendations to City Council regarding the other license types, specifically the retail types of licenses, both medical and recreational. But, you know, we will be looking at what options might be appropriate for a council to look at down the road. It is important, certainly, that, you know, that we try to accommodate the medical provisioning centers. We have issued two licenses. There hasn't been any movement because of the issues that were expressed earlier this evening. And, you know, we'll certainly have some dialogue, you know, maybe this spring, later this winter, at some point in the future, about how we should proceed, should we proceed at all in changing anything or tweaking anything. And those are just conversations we're just not prepared to have yet tonight. And so as I mentioned before, sort of baby steps, you know, this was the next thing on the list that we needed to reexamine, so.
All right. Tonight, we do have in our packets the minutes of the Elected Officials Compensation Commission, and y'all got a raise. We all got a raise. So we appreciate the work of the commission, so thank you for that. And that will take us to our final public comment for this evening.
Well, it's getting about that time. I do want to say thank you to council, city staff. These last couple of years have been trying times for everybody. COVID, thank you for your due diligence. We're still not out of the woods yet. The county got a nice raise. The city employees, directors, et cetera, they deserve it too for what they have to go through. I think that's important. So bottom line is, thank you. You know, 100 years ago, we were going through some other pandemic, you know, and it's, the more times change, the more things stay the same. But anyways, I do want to say one thing. I've been coming to council meetings for two to three years, and I don't see what we're doing for the citizens of Cadillac. I mean, sure, we're doing improvements here and there, but it's all for the industry, all for business. I know, I know we have police, fire, good roads. Maybe we deserve a little tax break ourselves. You know, there's a lot of rental houses. I like to, you know, lumber's pretty high right now. I like to rehab a couple houses more. But with COVID and everything, I don't want nobody in my homes right now, but anyways. So that's about it. Robert, here's your ethics pledge. Thank you, council. And like they say, smoke them if you got them. And I never inhaled either. I just want you to know that.
Hello again. I would just like to thank you for your comments about considering the provisioning center retail establishment issue. And I would appreciate the council having an open mind about the topic. Certainly, there are other communities that have faced this choice as well. I just reiterate that not proposing increasing the number of locations by any means, just making it a competitive market, as I think was the intent behind these ordinances, so, thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order, if anyone has anything this evening.
Mayor, members of the City Council, I'll try to be brief, and it's unfortunate we had a resident, I think, just step out. But I wanted to address comments that were just made to the City Council regarding, you know, what does the City Council do for our residents? And there was the correlation of industrial incentives and commercial incentives, and, you know, how does that help, how does that help the people? And I think it's important, and I could probably pontificate about this for hours at a time, and I won't, but I think it's, I think it's important to try to frame a basic understanding that the, you know, the City Council, the city organization, the things that we do, we do in a manner to provide service to all of the constituents of the city in the best way possible. We always look at ways to try to benefit the greater good, in a sense. And certainly by working towards improving our economy, by providing the ability for there to be more housing, for there to be more commercial opportunities, whether it's restaurants, or shops, or stores, or service businesses, by improving our own facilities, whether they're parks, lighting, lakes, sidewalks, you name it. You know, it's all, it's all related to one another, and it's all done in a manner to provide a sense of place, to provide a sense of community, to not just, you know, sustain the value of property, property that's owned by our citizenry, property that's owned by private business as well, but to sustain that property, to improve the value of that property. In a lot of people's lives, the greatest asset that they own is their home. And so when a community, when a city, takes the necessary steps forward to encourage economic development, encourage redevelopment, you know, smart redevelopment, and does so by providing incentives and working with other governmental agencies and partners, and that endgame results in improved property values and improved destination locations and better jobs and newer jobs and all of the things that come with it. That is directly how, you know, this body essentially gives back, you know, to the community. And, you know, we try to, you know, make the right decisions as often as we possibly can to get us there. So, thank you for entertaining.
Thanks for saying that. That's, you know, that's always been my goal to further, to make the city that I love so much a place that my children want to be in and that my, a good place to be in to raise a family, quality of life. And all the decisions that we make here is for that. So I appreciate you putting it so eloquently. Thanks, Marcus.
Okay, do you have anything else? Okay, nor do I, so we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.